Bienvenidos a la reunión de mayo 2022 de la Comisión de Planificación para el pueblo de Southampton. Así que esta noche vamos a hacer una reunión híbrida donde tenemos tres miembros aquí en la sala y creo que dos otros miembros en Zoom. Así que empezaremos aquí en la agenda con los plegarios. En respuesta al flagel de Estados Unidos de América y a la República por la cual se extiende una nación bajo el sol indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos. Así que vamos a hacer una llamada de rola. Es Pamela Gil Martin. Sí, no está aquí. Laura Davini. No está aquí. Eduardo.
Tal vez.
Sí. Cristian Pico.
Ángel.
Está bien, perfecto, Cristian. Bob, Bob Assay.
Sí.
Está bien. Michael, Michelangelo Liberman, creo que me dijo que no podía llegar esta noche. Michael Anderson.
Presente.
Aquí, está bien. Summer Sterling. Parece que no está con nosotros y yo mismo, Mark Schefter. Está bien, vamos a... El primer item en la agenda es la revisión y aprobación de los minutos anteriores.
Voy a hacer un motion.
Está bien. Un segundo. Todos en favor.
Hi.
Hi. Está bien, así que el primer item en la agenda esta noche es... Tenemos una presentación de Bill Mangor sobre los actualizaciones de master plan y quiero decir que Bill está acompañándonos a través de Zoom. Bill Mangor ha estado mucho tiempo involucrado con el pueblo. Ha sido un trustee y ha estado muy involucrado con el último master plan. Y realmente siempre ha sido... Los esfuerzos de Bill Mangor siempre han sido extremadamente bienvenidos. Gracias mucho por venir esta noche y nos habló un poco más sobre el master plan.
Muchas gracias, señor presidente. Así que, Mark, realmente aprecio que me invites a dar un actual de dónde estamos en el desarrollo del master plan comprensivo para el pueblo de Southampton. 并获得了非常好的回应。我们还有两个工作会议，现在 workshops， 一个是 virtual 在秋天举行，这是1月27日举行的； 另一个是去年在 person 在 cultural center 在2月26日举行的。我觉得这是一个有价值的 workshop。我们进行了村庄咨询公司的一个 overview，BFJ，Bukhurst Fish and Fish Market。这些都被记录了，然后带回主要的 auditorium，在 cultural center 关于 comprehensive plan。这非常好。我们然后要进行审查，把它们提交给 trust board， 他们可能在六月有时间。然后 trust board 定制一个公共会议， 在村庄可以采取 adoption 的时候。另外我想强调的是，村庄会经过 SECR process， 需要几个月。Trust board，我认为将是主导机构， 例如村庄中的一些 bike lanes。我今天在 BFJ 和他说，这个可以通过 trust board 不使用 SECR。SECR真的对于任何 zoning 改变和其他更严重的改变，比如村庄代码或类似的东西。你有时候需要从里到外跑， 防止交通的流量发生太多 interruption， 因为停在两条街道的两侧。bike lanes 是另一个主要的组成部分， 这个计划中已经解决。例如，Newgin 街和 Windmill 道都有 significant width， 他们可以容纳 bike lane。大家都知道 biking 是在 Main Street 和 Jobbs 道禁止的。master plan 想知道我们如何让人们通过村庄骑行， 不走那些禁止的街道。我们可以有专门的 bike lanes，在，你知道，这是个建议， Newgin 街和 Windmill 道， 让你可以从北方到南方， 由那条道路而走，这也是真正的旧 Montauk highway 路。但那是其中一个选项。另一个想法是有一个 loop 来到达 beaches， 这可能是首先沿着 Lake Agawam 下坡， 然后去 South Main Street。再次，这可能是一个 loop，让人们可以走到 beaches。所以这些都是在 draft plan。这些章节，包括我现在谈论的 transportation 章节， 在线村庄网站上。随着计划的发展， 我们会发布更多的章节，draft chapters，在村庄网站上进行 review。所以这很好。这引起了人们的 concern。再次，一些更绿色开放的空间的 preservation。所以它不像全是 hard scape，如果你明白我在说什么。所以这就是另一个问题。而且这些实际上都是引起关注的， 村庄委任，我想你们所有委任 Studio AB 几年前。BFJ 合作了这项研究的结果， BFJ 已经考虑过， 他们正在考虑把这些建议融入这个 master plan revision 或者 update。这显然与 residential 很不同。一旦有一个 sewer plan 在行， 并且它是 operational， 这将允许额外的 restaurant。我们希望村庄有更多的 variety， 以及允许可能的 apartments 在大楼的第二层， 可以在 Windmill 道和 Newgin 街上建造。我们希望那些 residences 显然会更 affordable， 因为这是一个经常出现的问题， affordable housing。BFJ 的 planners 有一个提议， 是将 workforce housing law 加入， 纽约州法颁发的，尤其是 Long Island， 一定一部分应该用于 workforce housing。可以用于 workforce housing。这个 comprehensive plan，再次， 由 trust board 提前进行 review。会有公共会议， 关于这些不同的建议。是再次，黑暗的天空，黑暗的天空的 enforcement。你知道，所以肯定这部分确实是 enforcement 问题， 因为这些项目已经在村庄代码中， 但是它是 enforcement 的问题。委员会，与 Southampton Hospital 的代表。转移到 Southampton College 地方， 他们可能会建造一个新的 facility。所以，再次，BFJ 和委员会与 hospital 的代表进行了讨论。因为他们真的处于这个阶段。我们很清楚村庄不会改变任何 zoning， 直到，而且我们看到了 hospital 发出的建议， 他们想做什么。但 BFJ 看着 hospital 基本上在不同的 segment， 例如， Lewis 和 Meeting House 道的周边 parking lot， 它们与 single family homes 交叉。你知道，建议是这些应该作为 single family homes 的保持。主要的 hospital 地方，如果你愿意， 医院大楼本身， 那是关于那里会发生什么的问题。是否只是 single family homes， mixed use of residential。但是从 hospital 和 BFJ 中很明显， 他们认为应该是 residential，不是 commercial， 不是 industrial，不是其他类型的 zoning， 但可能是一种 mixed use of residential 在那个区域。可能将其 retrofit 出来用于 residential 使用。但他们说他们需要进行分析， 或者是否试图 renovate 老建筑和重新适应用于 residential 使用。就像我说的，村庄在这一点， 和 BFJ 发出的建议是， 村庄不要对 zoning 改变做出任何行动， 最后，我想只是提到， 和 Cristian Pico 在这个 call 上一起。我和 Cristian 我们具体地谈了村庄的 tree management plan。而是实际上村庄的 tree management plan。所以有一些，再次， organized fashion， 和 Cristian，如果你还有什么想说的， 但我知道它基本上是一个村庄的总体 tree management plan， 树的大小， 也许村庄甚至，Cristian 提到， 也许村庄甚至可以有一个小 nursery， 所以，他们的 idea 或者概念是， 村庄真的应该有一个 tree management plan 但是我认为这就是真正的 update。正如我说的，我们正在进展得很好。The steering committee 在寻找一个 draft 的计划， 可能 sometime，也许到这个月的最后。然后我们会进行审查，然后将它提交给 trust board， 为他们的 review 和 analysis。但是我想这是我需要说的，Mark， 我很感激你给我这个机会， 在这里说一下，提供你的 committee 的一个 update。
谢谢，Bill，非常 enlightening。我一直想知道我们有没有问题？
祝你有个愉快的夜晚。
谢谢，Bill。
谢谢。我有一个小问题。Bill，你知道村庄的 budget 现在已经达到了超过 $30 万， 应该进行 restructure， 应该在村庄的 management structure 有变化吗？
好吧，我想在实施一些 master plan 的方面， 你知道，这是个很好的点，Mark， 没有太多的费用。There will be the availability， 例如，当我以前是 trustee， 我们实际上得到了州资金来建设 Hill Street 的 bike lane。我们还得到了州 grant 资金来修建 sidewalk， 例如，在 Golden Pear 的拐角， 以减少 pedestrians 要跨越 Main Street 的距离。所以这些是 BFJ 22 年前提出的建议， 然后我们能够获得州 grant 资金来实施这些计划的部分。你知道，我们做了一些额外的工作，在 West Main Street 上， 试图创造一个 curb。但是这一切都是通过村庄获得 grant 资金得到的。我记得在 2021 年。所以另外一件事是，显然 sewer 系统和继续前进， 会花费一些钱。但我理解那里也有 grant 资金可以考虑。我还没有看到那些 estimates， 我知道还在工作中。但是，你知道，这是计划的一部分。但是这是很重要的部分，因为它会允许额外的 restaurant。就像我说的，村庄中很多人说他们想看到更大的 restaurant。你知道，我们有很多很高的 restaurant。他们想看到 restaurant 不总是最高的。而且，当然，一种办法是获得更多的 restaurant， 是创建 sewer 系统， 让我们可以容纳更多的 restaurant 在村庄。因为在这个点，我们有 septic 系统。同时，回到 affordable housing 的问题， sewer 系统会允许在 central business district 中的 apartments。再次，我们希望可能会是 smaller apartments， 可能老年人想缩小， 但仍然住在村庄，他们可以走路。所以这些都是取决于 sewer 系统， 这会花费一些钱。但是，再次，那里有 grant 资金可以考虑。如果有一些 zoning modifications 被做， trust board 决定要实施什么和何时， 以及看是否可以利用州或联邦 grant 资金，
是的，谢谢。还有其他问题吗？ 如果我可以补充，关于 sewer 系统， 你说的是，这是真的， 它是一个 master plan 的关键部分， 我们正在走向的地方。一个大型的 centralized water treatment 系统可能是一个解决方案， 但也许也应该考虑 smaller 系统的开发。在村庄商业区， 也许也应该进行审查。
是的，是的。中心商业区，Mark， 显然是 sewer 系统的最重要地方， 我在 specifically 讲 Newgin 街和 Windmill 道， 现在在 Newgin 街的北方， 你知道，我们有很多空的 banks， 老办公室还是空的 storefronts。那将是这个区域。我想提一点，Main Street 和 Jobbs 道是在历史地区， 我不认为任何人想看到 Main Street 或 Jobbs 道真的被重建， 因为它们是非常漂亮的街道， 和村庄的心和性格的 integral部分。你知道，所以那些， 但 Newgin 街和 Windmill 道是真正目标于重建的地区。而且这是 specifically 这是村庄的最有利之处， 就是 sewer 系统。
好的，谢谢。我们今晚很幸运能有两名 trustee 在观众席。Gina Resta 和... 所以如果你想有什么评论， 和 Joe McLaughlin，
我想感谢你，Bill， 你一直在努力。
是的，我很感激， 已经过去八个月了， 但我们正在接近， 所以我们可以看到，我们可以看到终点线。这很好。无论是从调研， 还是在 virtual workshop， 再次，1月27日， 或者在 person workshop 2月26日。所以我们真的有，你知道， 村庄里的一个很好的群体， 喜欢说出来， 我们能够把这些 incorporated，所以这是非常重要。
这就是我们要的， 获取公众的 input，
绝对，是的。
所以这是一个巨大的 turnout， 包括在 person 和调研中。
是的，我想我们有一些有趣的观点， 有人想看到村庄的 shoe repair shop。我不认为 trust board 可以强制村庄有 shoe repair shop， 但如果有人想开 shoe repair shop， 显然会有很多人想 patronize。
你现在要去 Riverhead， 我觉得他是最后一个。
无论如何，但是...
我想说，我... 谢谢你，Bill，你的时间。我也想说，我参加了会议， 所以我参加了 person 在 1月。所以我是公众的倾听者。我会很高兴看到 committee 和 BFJ 的结果。所以，我们会很高兴。谢谢，Bill。
我们可以在六月向你和 trust board 传达。所以，再次，我要... 我明天还会和 BFJ 有一个 meeting， and the committee 会在那里。所以我们想坚持时间线， 真正得到你们所有的人， sometime in June。所以，所以 stay tuned，Joe。
听起来很好，谢谢，Bill。
还有两个其他项目， 在 task force 和...
我觉得 Cristian 应该...
Cristian，你想说些什么？
Bill，我想...
这在车上并不很好。对不起，Cristian，你说一遍。
是的，我有一个问题。我有一个问题。How could you have master plan published without knowing exactly what real estate you're going to use for the sewer? How is that going to...
Well，well，the master plan is... That's a... I understand your question, Cristian， I appreciate that。所以 master plan 不是 coming out with a... The comprehensive plan，我应该说， is not coming out with a sewer plan。As you know，there's another group that's working on the sewer plan。But they've been sharing information with BFJ， so that，again，we can figure out the type of development that could occur in the central business district， based on what the sewer system would be able to accommodate。But，but they're actually，that's distinct， separate and distinct，their sewer plan is separate and distinct from the comprehensive plan。So the BFJ is not trying to， you know，dictate or have a hard recommendation on the sewer plan。That's not something that they have been tasked with addressing。That is still tasked to，you know，the other organization group in the village that's looking specifically at the sewer plan。But they've been sharing with us，you know，and BFJ， you know，the flow rate and how much can be accommodated to help understand then what type of development could occur， for example，on，again，Newgin 和 Windmill 道。So the two are a little bit separate。And so the comprehensive plan is not going to have in it a firm plan for the sewer system。It's just using some of the information that they've already accomplished。我觉得他们还在工作那个计划， But，but，but we're working in conjunction， if that makes sense，Cristian。
Right，and we will have next，at the next meeting， the June meeting，we should have Paul Travis making a presentation to us about their，an update on the sewer plans。There were two items that on，that one of the task force， we had two task force that looked into it。And maybe some of the points could be incorporated in the master plan。One was the acquisition，the possible acquisition of properties by the village to enhance our parks， such as，for example，the property at the corner of Hampton Road and Elm Street and other properties that had been identified。So，and the other point on the，was the possible conversion or modifications of the Veterans Hall into a youth and senior center。It's a great facility，that's right，that is owned by the village， right next to the cultural center。And maybe，I think many members of this commission felt that it was really being underutilized。And that that property could be put to a much better use by the village。
Very good。
Any other，any other questions?
And Zoom people have any questions?
Any other，any，any，somebody else from the public? Bob，你有什么想说的吗？
No，I think Bill did an excellent report。I like everything he said。
谢谢，Bob，我很感激。
谢谢。
All right。谢谢，Mark。我现在就签了， 让你继续你的会议。谢谢。
Okay，very good，thank you so much。
Okay，bye bye。
Bye bye。So that was，covered a lot of materials。Now，maybe we'll just have a little discussion， I'd like to have maybe a discussion，hopefully to the public， to，about the efforts that we have done on the... to about the efforts that we have done on the various task force. I don't know if you want to.
So as as far as acquisition task force goes, we have spoken about a few properties, Hampton Road and Elm Street, I think is one of our number one priorities. We spoke about sending a letter to the board and to the mayor, possibly having them consider acquiring that.
Yeah.
Nugent Street is one of those, some properties, commercial properties that we could consider. Sending a letter also, seeing if you guys are going to agree to purchase some of those properties.
And also on David White's lane, there was a property that we thought maybe that the village owns that possible could be a a candidate for disposition. And where monies could then be used for better use, for public use. So I think that we worked also with the town. The town was nice enough to produce a very nice map of the properties that are owned by the town within the within the village and the property owned by the public utilities like LIPA or National Grid and properties owned by the village. So I think if I did.
Prospect Street, we were talking about Prospect Street, where LIPA has their substation there, about possibly putting parking on that street so people could walk into the village from there, possibly creating another municipal parking lot there. But we would also need the mayor or somebody, probably the mayor, to contact LIPA to see if they would even consider either giving us a property or having us rent the property. So people wouldn't have to drive into the village constantly.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, and maybe have an electric shuttle from the village to that parking area.
When that, when that, when that all came down, under the elected administration, there were certain caveats that were visited with TSMG, LIPA, and the village. And I think it would do everyone some good to reacquaint ourselves with those caveats before, so that we know the background. If we know the background and we know who we dealt with, and who was dealt with and what was said and what was agreed to, then move forward from there.
You're right, because that particular property along the railroad is really not properly maintained.
No.
It's LIPA is.
As I said, there was a certain caveat. When that all was developed and agreed to with with LIPA. And I I I'm sorry, I don't have the date, dates in my in my mind. Maybe I have a record of them, I don't know. But I'm sure that they exist somewhere. I mean, hopefully, they're somewhere. So that they can be reviewed.
Right. And the other, on, so on the other task force, I think the one that strikes me as also very important is the the possibility to of doing something with the Veterans Hall.
Well, I'm really waiting on panel and and she sends her apologies. She wanted to attend today, but she had some medical issues. So she asked me to send her apologies to y'all.
Thank you.
And she will be back the 15th, so where she's planning on. So I'm really waiting for her and for Summer to follow and see where we go from here.
Right, I think it's a really a great facility. It has three stories. There's three stories, three, great access, right in front of the park. And I think that it could be really be a tremendous benefit to the village residents, whether it's the youth residents or the senior residents.
Well, the only thing, the only real stumbling which I've said before is data. We lost all of the data that was compiled by the village in regards to seniors and youth at the former community that was shut down for a period and it's now been reenacted. But there was a date, there was a compilation data about village residents, seniors and youth that is gone. So it would be a prodigious effort to assemble that again. So as, you know, as all things, time moves slowly.
Okay, well, it's it's something that we should, it's worth putting some efforts into. The other task force that we had was the the mobility task force to try to enhance the mobility within the village. We reviewed this and I don't think we have come up with definite recommendations yet on that on that effort. And regarding the trees and environmental task force, I know Christian has been very involved with the Harbor Day Foundation and we had recently the 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 Harbor Day, the commemoration, where I think Gina and the mayor planted a tree.
Yes, we did.
What kind of tree?
Maple what?
No, I'll look it up.
I know I got an email from Christian that it was a maple. What kind of maple?
I'm going to look it up so I don't misspoke.
Huh? Just give me a moment.
Yes, so we planted a tree.
Is it big? It's big.
It was a nice size.
Well, that's about two inches, two inches.
Yes.
About like that, right?
Next, the another.
I don't know, wait a minute, I want to find out what kind of maple. Christian, do you remember?
I'm sorry, I can't really hear.
October maple.
October maple.
Yes.
Red, yellow, sugar, silver.
There was a maple. I saw your email. I didn't reply. I don't know the answer. If it's not relevant to you, I will pass it on to Stephen Philip, who will make sure to answer you.
Okay, great. Another item on the environmental task force was to review the adoption of the New York Stretch Code, which I think is still under review. We're looking at exactly what the impact it's going to have on the various segments of the population. And although the New York Stretch Code has a lot of appeal and maybe items that are easy to comply with for a certain segment of the population, it may also create a burden on another segment for not very much valid reasons. So this is still being reviewed. The so the next item on the agenda, we were going to have possibly a presentation by the village clerk, Kathy Sweeney, but I think it may be postponed for next month. So on the all right, so I think that that's going to be the other discussion. I'm not sure we are really ready to review those at this point. They should be on the calendar for next meeting. We will have Paul Travis and possibly DNB Engineering provide an update on the sewer district, on the creation of the sewer district.
Since we have the deputy mayor here, I have a question. Is there somebody I can reach out to in the village to possibly look at back records to see if there was anything done?
That would be the clerk.
Village clerk?
Yeah. That would be Kathy Sweeney.
One, can I, do I have permission to do that?
Sure do.
Okay. Then I'll try to look, look into that.
Yes.
By by that, Mark.
I I think it's best to check the official record.
Well, he could do that first, but if it doesn't exist, then he can always go to step two.
Okay. Yeah, and Kathy, I'm sure Kathy will be happy to help. She's a
Kathy Sweeney?
Kathy Sweeney, she's very thorough and she's a great addition to the staff of the village.
She is.
Yeah, she's a okay, but based on this, I think that if there's any other item that that anybody wants to discuss?
No.
No, anybody? So I think maybe.
I just have a question for Christian. Christian, I sent you a bunch of step by email about former tree issues that were discussed with the state committee or the state committee. And then also, there was a draft of a law that I think De Petras is reviewing. And it never went anywhere. Did you receive that information?
I did, thank you. And let me just update the group quickly on 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 those issues. So what we're reviewing is what historically the village had done in terms of possible ordinance for for private trees. And you provided some very good information on that. And when I spoke with the steering committee of the master plan, discovered that they and BFJ are coming up with their own separate proposal for private tree ordinance. So I would make the recommendation to the commission at this point to simply let the master plan come up with their recommendation for private use ordinance. Not go there for now, evaluate it and 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 perhaps be helpful to the trustees once we get to that section. In terms of public tree, or called an urban forest management plan, Mike Lieberman and myself spoke with the steering committee to make sure that the master plan itself, before it was published, had some reference to the need of an urban forest.
Yeah, I think we, I think we may have lost Christian.
No, he's trying.
He's trying, all right.
Trying.
Well, maybe at the next, at the next meeting, Christian can make a continue that presentation and discussion. So if there's no other items to discuss, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So we'll see everybody on June 2nd.